I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Invite your all to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Meetings from the previous meeting were sent out. Any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion that we approve in minutes as emailed.
Second. Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Phyllis, would you please do roll call?
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Okay. Being past seven, we have a public hearing, so I would entertain a motion to suspend the council meeting.
I'll make a motion to suspend the council meeting and...
I'll second.
Motion to second to suspend the council meeting to go into a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, to open a public hearing for confirming resolution for Champion Home Builders, activate.
Do you want to come up? If you guys want to come up, in case council has any additional questions.
Yep.
Welcome back. Thank you.
So, the purpose of this public hearing is to allow the public to weigh in on an application by Champion Home Builders. And that's the DVA for Champion Modular, Inc. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay. SB1s and applications were submitted. On June 20th, council heard the petition by Champion and the basis for their request. They are making real estate improvements in the amount of $8,429,940 that would bring in approximately 232 individuals for employment at an average salary, annual salary of $50,400 per year. They are also doing personal property improvements through manufacturing equipment purchases totaling $19,312,969. So, it would also go to supplement those 232 jobs that would be brought to the area. On June 20th, council approved declaratory resolution 2023-13, which preliminarily approved 10-year tax abatements for both personal property and real property. So, at this time, public has the opportunity to weigh in. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak or in opposition of the proposed tax abating? Hearing no one and seeing no one come forward, that concludes the public hearing. And we'd entertain a motion to reinstate the council meeting.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
This time, I'd also like to make a matter of record that the legal notice was published in Decatur, Democrat, for this public hearing. Thank you.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now entertain a motion...
I'll make a motion that we reopen city council meeting.
Probably soon.
I thought we are. I thought we had made a motion to reopen the council meeting. We're already there, I think.
Not ordered.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're a rookie, that's fine.
You put them both together, right? Both ways.
Yeah, I think you did. You closed it and opened it all in the same one.
Okay. Where are we adding?
All right. So, at this time, council has the opportunity to consider resolution 2023-14, which is a confirming resolution that formally approved the personal property and real property tax abatement. It confirms that the establishment of an economic revitalization area at the location of Champion Home Builders, which is commonly known as 1418 South 13th Street in Decatur. This resolution verifies the basis and states pertinent portions of the applicant's SB1. It verifies that all statutory requirements have been complied with by the city in terms of notice of the holding of a public hearing and references the declaratory resolution and grants a tax deduction for personal property for the period of 10 years and grants a tax deduction for personal property also for a 10-year period. And again, just we stated this in the last tax abatement process, that taxes are still being paid. They're being paid at a prorated amount and they're gradually increased over that 10-year period of time. Even though they're applying for it in 2023, based on statutory timelines, their tax abatement would not take effect until 2025. They would only pay 0% on improvements made in that first year and then a 10% would be added on each year until that 10-year period expires. So, if council wants to entertain that motion or entertain a motion to pass that resolution.
Make a motion to introduce resolution 2023-14 by short title only.
Second.
Motion to second, they're reading.
For resolution, so passes on one.
All in favor?
Passes.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 2023-14, a resolution of the common council of the City of Decatur confirming the establishment of an economic revitalization area upon the application of Champion Home Builders, Inc.
Make a motion to pass motion 2023-14.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Roll call or all in favor?
All.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passed. On behalf of the city, I want to thank you for your commitment and your investment. You know, for many years, that was a thriving location. For then several years, it was vacant. You folks have come in, we've cleaned up the property, the grass is mowed, the buildings look good. And it's great to see the parking lot starting to fill up with employees in our community. So, thank you for your investment.
Once the mayor returns, I'll get the SB1 form signed and then I'll email you a copy for us for your records.
Okay.
If there's a short topic that can be discussed, because we have another public hearing at 7:15.
Okay. Short. Kevin, let's bring you up on ARPA funds. This Kevin. Kevin has a request to use some funds from the American Rescue Plan.
Yes. We discussed in the boardwork meeting. We're going to do the Outfall project in-house, substantial savings. And as I mentioned before, with our biggest user on the wastewater side, Dean Boonsoo, our own business, about a year and a half ago, the operating fund has taken a hit for the wastewater utility. We're down about $300,000 in revenue that we've normally had this time of year. So, I was wanting to request to use ARPA funds to do that Outfall project, especially for materials. As I said, the price of materials is roughly $60,000. So, that's substantial savings of roughly $200 of the bids worth. So, if we were able to use some ARPA funds, that would essentially be a zero impact on the wastewater operating budget. Besides finishing up some minor details. I wanted to wait till Dana's back too, but I spoke to him on the phone. He seems on board with it. I don't know, there's lots of steps to get that money approved, resolutions, I want to bring it up and see if council will accept it to it. If so, then we can move forward with ordering materials and getting that to the board.
Phyllis, what's left in the ARPA fund?
There's about $700,000 actually paid for the park improvements.
And that's got to be used by the end of next year?
We have to allocate it towards something by December 31st to '24.
And the funds, all funds have to be dispersed by the end of '26.
But it fits right in the scope of things and I think it's a...
We could essentially go from a $200,000 project, coming out of the operating fund for a couple thousand, I don't know. So, that would help the wastewater utility for the next six months. And then when somebody occupying that building at the end of this year, next year, whatever it may be, those revenue streams will come back. And then also, we have some bonds maturing at the end of this year. So, that would be additional monies for that utility that won't have to be paid out every May, I mean.
Does it also keep the user from paying more in the long run?
Yeah. Yeah, because we're required to keep our balances at a certain level due to our bonds that we have out. We have to have 100% bond payments. We have to be able to cover that bond payment with our operating fund, a minimum of 100%. So, if that drops below that, we would be a technical default on our bond even though we have the money to pay it. So, I'm just trying to skirt any of that before we get even close to that. So, like I said, we have to keep certain balances. So, if we're able to use some ARPA funds for this, that will just be a little more comfortable for the next six months. Then if something pops up, some burdensome repairs or anything like that, we'll still be comfortable enough to handle it.
I think this highlights the importance of having our large industrial users occupied in these buildings with people that are actually using them.
Yeah. In 18 months, it's probably, on the just the wastewater sites, over $300,000 that we would normally see from that user in '17, '18, '19, leading up into '20, '21.
So, are we short with water then?
Not as the water. And we've been doing a ton of projects on the wastewater and stormwater side in the last year. So, we've been making a lot of headway with a lot of major improvements. So, yeah, it's just kind of getting to that.
Discussion. I'll make a motion for Phyllis to move forward with allocating funds for what needs to be done for...
I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Being 7:15, we have another public hearing. First, I would like to make a matter of record a legal notice for this 7:15 public hearing.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, I would like to make a motion to suspend the city council meeting to go into a public hearing in regards to American Rescue Plan funds towards park improvement projects.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion second, all in...
Aye.
At this point, we're in a public hearing and I will turn it over to Dan.
Phyllis, what do you mean? Okay. Previously, we had approved, council approved to move forward with an additional appropriation of $180,000 to use the American Rescue Plan monies towards park improvement projects for Kikiyanga Riverside Center and the Rep Sports Complex in Ska Mar, Maripark. So, I have, I prepared the resolution. It's an additional appropriation for the ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund for $180,000.
So, at this time, are there any members of the public that wish to speak for or against change in the plan and additional appropriation for park improvement? Hearing and seeing none, that concludes this public hearing. So, we'd entertain a motion to reinstate the council meeting?
Still moved?
Or resume the council meeting?
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Back in the council meeting.
Okay. And at this time, we'd entertain a motion to introduce resolution 2023-15, which is the formal statement of the additional appropriation of $180,000 to be used for park improvement.
Does that have to be used this year or just because it's allocated? Can it...
Since it's not budgeted where and we didn't appropriate any money, that's why we have to do the additional preparation.
But what if it doesn't get completed by the end of the year? Does it just...
Oh, if this project doesn't get completed, yes, I would do encumbrance.
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 2023-15 by short title only.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Resolution 2023-15, additional appropriations for the ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund.
Make a motion to pass resolution 2023-15.
I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next on our agenda, we have a couple of items regarding the arts. Kim Brandt is here with us tonight, our director of the Hive. If you don't mind, come on up and...
I brought my information, photos to share.
Great.
Did you take somebody?
Scott Markery Night.
So, I'm not going to read all this. I just wanted to give it to you and just thank you for what's happening at the Hive and becoming, I like to think, a center for the community with the wonderful thing going on. I did include, there's basically $30,000 worth of art hanging in the Hive now with the breakdown of that indoor square and the list of the classes that have been held and mobile upcoming activities.
I would thank you for coming before us. We had a slow start getting the Hive opening with COVID and you have stepped into this role and have really blossomed and growing this. So, seeing some momentum and some conversation I personally have with the mayor as well as you. We want to help this succeed and I think that's why we called you before us tonight to say what's going on, what do you need, what, where does the Arts Commission fit in this? And that's why we're here.
I could read the whole list. I don't know, it's kind of hard when work's doing in and I work from home, I don't know. So, and I get kind of confused between the Arts Commission and there's a lot of people reporting. You can like, like when I did the classes, I'm asking the Arts Commission for a second of the teachers and then writing grants to you and for... Because there was one special place for everything, that was... Well, one budget.
Okay. So, Phyllis, what do you have in regards to the Arts Commission and their request, you know, financial support? And how does that fit in with the Hive?
The Decatur Arts Commission has members that review the budget and the activities that go on in the Hive, the art gallery. So, they prepared a budget at our last meeting. Right now, they have a cash balance of $22,791 and they've prepared a budget for 2024 to include $5,000 towards the Art Commission, $8,000 towards programs at the Hive Art Gallery, $3,000 for repairs and maintenance to the city's sculptures, and $4,000 for projects and events. Council has approved that in the past and they would like to continue that for the requesting another $5,000 for this year. And in that $5,000, that helps Kim run projects and events. And then with that, the Decatur Sculpture Tour is requesting financial support for this year and next year, $2,500 each year. And county mayor has prepared a letter for DJV to read. You want to hand this down? And the Arts Commission members have approved this already, but they want council's approval also on it. There's trouble here, so just take it, pass down and we'll be back to it as well. I don't know if you want me to read all that, if you guys want to read that.
I think we've all seen the value of, let's start with the sculpture tour. We've all seen the value in that program. It's grown year after year. It brings people to Decatur, not just for that event, but year long. I see them in our business. I see them on the streets.
There's a couple from Hunter Town here yesterday that came for the sculpture tour.
And at the bottom there, she says, "How many times have you been asked from other community leaders, 'How can we do this in our community?'" "What more?" "We welcome your additions." So, she would like your comments also on this.
Okay. So, we got the sculpture tour that wants $2,500 support for the next, per year for two years?
Yeah.
And you said the Art Commission is asking for $5,000?
Yeah. And in that $5,000, we'll pay for the $5,000 also. I mean, we're going to pay $25,000 this year's budget, $25,000 next year. So, we've already got, we're going to put it in the Public Arts Commission Fund. So, I'll prepare that when I bring you guys your budgets next month. You'll see that in there. But they wanted to request that since you guys are aware of what the money's going towards.
So, I think it's twofold. That's the first thing. Do we want to pay $2,500 a year for the sculpture tour out of the Arts Commission Fund? Doesn't the Art Commission make that decision though? Or they're just making...
Actually, council approves the budget. They prepare a budget that ultimately approves their budget.
Are we still providing seed money for that program?
That's what this is.
So, this is just...
The $5,000.
Wasn't it higher in previous years or is it...
The first year, I think it was $10,000 and then every year after that, it's been $5,000.
So, I would say, actually, you can look at it going back to the $10,000.
Basically, yeah.
Because we're already putting the $5,000 and then that's an additional $5,000?
Right.
Kim, are they making any kind of commissions off these arts or... 20%?
Some back to the city. And then they keep saying... You mean the Art Commission or the artist?
Or is the 20%? Is it just...
That goes in the Public Arts Fund.
It goes in the Public Arts. That's in this $22,790.
I think part of the reason why they're asking where money is, how many artists and that money is paid out of this fund, right? It doesn't just come back to the Hive from the sale comes out of a particular fund. So, for some more artists, they want to have...
I think, isn't it going into this fund? It's going into this $22,000?
So, the cash balance is in there, but then they only appropriate so much money out of that cash balance every year.
And from my math, they're appropriating $20,000?
Yeah.
Of the $22,790?
Correct.
But then are they asking for $10,000 on top of that?
No. No, they aren't. That is their budget. They've already decided on this budget, but include that in some of their expenditures, as part of their expenditures. So, they're going to pay artists out of that budget. They're going to pay Decatur Sculpture Tour financial help for the next two years and then maintain the city-owned sculptures out of that $20,000. And then, what else did we say? And then to run, for Kim to run the Hive and the art gallery and the events in there.
Maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but isn't there enough money in the budget to run everything they have without our money? I'm not saying to stop giving them money, but if they have $22,000 in their budget and they budgeted 20, they have $2,000 left over in their budget. And we, yearly, we add $5,000 every year, which would take their cash balance up to $7,000 if they...
They jumped their budget by about $10,000.
But they're making money now, so I mean, I guess they can spend the money. That was a goal.
That's what I was going to say. That's why they bumped it up to the $20,000.
That was the goal, to start the seed money and then money start coming in. Is that a two-year budget or a one-year?
It's one year, yeah. I was just going to use the words left in their budget for this year to pay the $2,500. But then, when I prepare the new budget for '24, I was going to incorporate $2,500 for Decatur Sculpture Tour.
I mean, the sculpture tour brings a lot of people to downtown Decatur, so... We're asking here, do we need to move this to the Public Arts Commission or are we just paying the sculpture tour?
Yes, it will come out of the general budget and go, I'll put it in the Public Arts Fund.
I'll make a motion to move that to the Public Arts Fund.
I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, I think we can move to Kim and her proposal before us for kind of updating us on what's going on at the Hive and what you would like to see moving forward.
Well, we had talked a little bit about trying to add more hours. I guess I've hired about 20 Decatur, 20 hours or less a week. Yeah, not much time to have open doors and get plans when your thing's done. So, I've had talks with the mayor, showing, discussed it at the Arts Commission as well, trying to have the doors open more often. I don't necessarily want to be the person that has the doors open more often. I wouldn't find more hours, more working hours, but I don't want to be committed certain hours every day as retired from a job like, like I know now. But I feel like it would be beneficial if the public knew the Hive is always open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. So, that's what we're trying to figure out now.
And the mayor and I and Kim sat in on meetings with the Hive and with BIGS and the whole lost concept. With additional hours open, they can tap into more of the residents helping with more hours being open. I could tell you, being at the business next door, there's not a week goes by somebody doesn't come in the jewelry store and say, "When is the Hive open?" Because you're there some, but if somebody was there more, you're going to see even more activity. And as people are out and about more post-COVID, I think it's, you know, you've grown this. But it's a good, a good thing. So, this is kind of moving to the next steps of availability.
Right. Like I paid out of the mayor's budget. And I don't. And I guess I wanted to bring attention to the rentals as well, have some whores rented, some whores rented, it seems like. There's like last July, there was one, there was two, there was three. So I think hopefully that'll be seen with the doors around you as well.
And did you also want to adjust, possibly adjust the fee for rental? You thought it was almost two?
If it was up to me, I would.
What is it currently?
I'd get an hour, a free hour before, a free, a free hour to set up and a free hour to clean up. I would propose it so much every hour and not have a free hour if it was up to me. But I don't take care of the rental stuff. Jamie does that.
So Jamie, enlighten us, what, what is it currently to rent this?
So currently it's fifty dollars every hour. And that went up to four, where it was fifty dollars for the first hour and then twenty-five dollars every additional hour. But with that, you do get an hour before and an hour after. That's free of charge. That people can use towards their budget and things.
I would propose you pay, if you're there three hours, you pay three hours. Or so much. I think there's a place in this room that's like three hundred dollars for the doors for the day. I don't know, just kind of looking around. I think the brand building needs to come at the table for seventy-five dollars an hour. I think, I think our rate is very modest compared to others.
Well, it's very reasonable to start because we've wanted people using it. Now people are really using it. There's events there, I want to say all the time, but every week there's somebody renting the Hive and we certainly don't want to overcharge, but the idea is to build up some funding for this building to be self-sufficient. So there, there's that happy medium. And I think you see it day to day and Jamie, you see it week to week. So I value it in on. Jamie, what are your thoughts on, are we at a point where we can maybe get a little more out of this?
I mean, we probably could, but I also feel like we do want it to be affordable and it only holds forty-nine people because of the fire code. So I mean, maybe you look at just giving them a free hour before for setup. Cause most of the time for events, it takes two hours to set up at the Hive because of how people decorate it. They've got, you know, different balloon arches or they go pretty shabby with the setup. So they actually end up renting it an additional hour before they need to rent it. So they have two hours to set up. So I mean, maybe that hour behind, you don't give them for free. But I look towards making it affordable so people can use it.
So in terms of additional hours open, what is your proposal?
I don't know.
It's open twenty hours a week now? Would you like to, thirty hours a week, forty hours a week?
Yeah, I would have it as in a normal retail store if we could do that, but that's, that's gonna up your budget quite a bit. I don't, I just, and I never knew what is helpful at the Hive. I mean, I had my interpretation of when I talked to them and so that's kind of where I'm going and why I know that.
Well, what originally happened with this is when Camp, the art commission was started from Camp Collier. The goal was to run the Hive because we were gonna get this building and it was given to us, but we had no plan to run it. And we started the art commission. The goal was to give this art commission seed money and run with the seed money to make the Hive sustain on its own. I think between COVID and all that, that goal has gotten lost. I guess it's probably never been re-established, but council's goal was always to have this operate on its own, to find a director that could somehow make this thing profitable to help sustain and it's not just a city giving money away.
Right. I think there's so much potential there. I think there's so much more, more potential rental catering, I think, business maybe.
I, I think council would be, in my opinion, be open to any suggestions that make this more profitable.
And more classes. But I, I donate some time now. I mean, you can't get a lot done in twenty hours or less a week if you're actually there. And just like today, I'm there. And then when people come in, you're talking to them, you're not getting anything done. So it's just about.
Are we at the point where some of these, cause weren't the residents supposed to work at some point in, that was part of the deal or?
Right. Well, and part of the problem has been, I can't, I don't have access to them, their information. It's private information. And we had this discussion, we met with Big. Because when I was hired, I really would like to have had a meeting agreed, but I don't, I can't email them. I don't, to that, to the residents. So if they come down and talk to me then, you know, but there are some residents, there's two, who actually have art for sale in the Hive. And another one will on in the next show. So some contacts have been made with other residents. They are not really desiring to be involved necessarily, I should say.
So you're being paid at twenty hours a week?
Yes.
Do you, not necessarily?
And more sometimes. Sometimes it's quite a bit more on. I'm sitting in twenty-three or twenty-five.
Are you personally wanting to work more? Do you want to work thirty hours a week in a paid position? Would you rather have somebody else in there additionally?
I would potentially thirty. And then I heard, I didn't realize that's considered full-time and it would be beneficial that way. So I, I don't want to cause undue expense to the city, but I would be willing to do that. I, yeah, that's I would, I want to make it kind of what you want. I see so much potential there.
Is that in fact a cutoff, Phyllis, at thirty hours is where?
Thirty hours.
So we could make, we could go up to thirty, under thirty hours?
If they're continually working thirty hours, it would be, yeah, benefits would need to be added.
So I think we're still in discussion of what we could hire at under thirty hours and therefore benefits not be.
Correct.
And we have to be thirty hours every week. It'd be okay if it's thirty months in a while.
Right, yeah, right. Not continually.
And at some point, there could be a full-time employee that is the director of the Hive down the road.
I would probably, that would be a, a goal at some point.
But again, there has, there has to be money coming in to support that. That was the whole goal of council in the initial.
Right. There's kind of about like.
Yeah, the goal is for it to run on its own and then when a, a committee or an arts committee asks for donation, that they would come ask the arts commission for that donation to the sculpture tour. I don't know, isn't there like three or four different arts groups? Like North Adams Arts and?
So basically we're seeing growing pains. This is growing.
Nobody else is helping her.
Yeah.
We got a budget for twenty-seven thousand. Nobody's volunteering. Is that right?
Yeah.
And we've got renters, they're supposed to put in, I think it was two hours a month for every artist that lives in that place.
They don't have that recognition.
And they're not doing their, they're not holding their obligation. So my opinion is, is we start billing bigs for two hours a month for each one of those people that aren't putting in their time. You know, that was part of the deal. We got a parking lot and.
I think we should probably review the contract because I thought that that was in the contract.
Yeah.
There was a certain amount of time that they were supposed to work in that.
Wasn't it two hours a week, Jamie?
I honestly don't know what that.
I think it was. Or two hours a month, my pardon. Two hours a month.
It was, there was something in there.
Two hours, it wasn't, I can't think of many open hours. That's.
I know, but it was not, it was per person that would live in there. And there's what? Sixteen apartments? So that's thirty-two hours a month, which is not enough.
One thing to keep in mind, if it is like a volunteer or something, they wouldn't be able to sell the artworks technically because they wouldn't be bonded by the city.
Ah.
So that's something, you know, they could say they want to buy it and get a contact in with Kim or somebody, but if it's a volunteer that's in there, they can't technically sell the artwork.
You got any input?
Thank you.
Nothing in addition to what you guys have just said.
And I ain't cutting.
I think reviewing the contract once again, just to make sure we all have that understanding of what's in there would be important.
Does anybody remember, is the Hive supposed to provide free classes for the people living upstairs? I think that comment was made at the meeting. I have never seen anything. I don't know.
Provide what? Provide what?
Free classes.
Free classes.
I thought it was the other way around. The residents would provide the community with free art classes.
Yeah.
As a service for having the opportunity to live there.
To display their art.
To reduce expense and for displaying their art.
That would be great.
Yeah.
That's how it's supposed to work.
Yeah.
We have been, I've been so fortunate though. The rock class, the guy walked in, he was just wanting to give me rock town and like, how about teaching the class? And he was like, oh, I don't know about that. But he did it and he did a great job. And Dale, who lives upstairs, did the cartoon one oh one, twenty-two kids. Ruth White, who had twenty-five kids that are being in class and staying here, had twenty-one kids. So the interest is there in our community in both ways. We have great instructors and we have people that are interested in, in coming in for classes. So that's all we're here.
So I think, I'm going to speak for the mayor, but between now and either the next meeting or a couple of meetings out, let's review the contract, have the, ask the mayor to review the contract. So you have a better understanding of exactly what is expected of you and then maybe re-approach council for additional hours to be open. I don't think we're at a point myself that we can make that decision yet until we review this contract.
Okay. Any other questions about anything?
And then if you have any other ideas for revenue?
Other ideas for?
Well, I mean, that you come up with. You don't have to say them now, but like for this to sustain itself.
I think if there's monthly classes or, you know, just, yes. Yes, and yes. I know we donate all the time to do that.
Understandable.
Yeah.
Since you took over, there's way more people through the building, so that is appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We're gonna move on to department heads. Jeremy?
We have a request for that.
Yeah, he's got it.
Yeah.
Tonight at the board works meeting, I presented the proposal for the lighting project at Red Sports Complex with the option of the fourteen thousand dollar adder by Casper. Permission to take fourteen thousand out of park capital funds.
Okay. Jeremy's asking for fourteen thousand out of park funds, which he has in his budget.
No, it's a ceded, didn't you want to use the cap?
Yeah.
A ceded portion of his budget.
I guess we all had a discussion earlier. Wiley, you're the only one that's up here that needed the discussion, but.
Well, I was listening. Yeah, I, I would, I would take the recommendation from the board of works and make a motion to allow the fourteen thousand to be spent from the CETA parks fund to supplement the lighting project.
You made a motion?
I'll second.
Second. Motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jeremy.
Other than that, with water tower project going on in the south part of the city, it's gave us quite a bit extra work from the last four days. We're on nine water main breaks since Friday morning. We made them completed. We're waiting on the gas company, the LeCue Gas Man on the ninth of August. It's been a real blast few days. You guys are tired. I hope that they can get, get a break here tonight. Actually, just sleep through tonight. Other than that, just a lot of little missile aid, that's probably what's going on. I want to thank our summer kids and Bill Atlas, all of Time City employees for all the curb painting and hydro painting that's been going on through the city. They're doing a remarkable job. You drive around, you can see a lot of things that haven't been painted for many, many years. The weather is cooperating and they're getting a lot accomplished, so thank you.
Yeah, the outdoor Riverside project is looking really, really good too.
Yeah, it's coming along. It's, it can speed back up. So hopefully in three, four weeks, we should be able to get it back up.
Thank you.
Police chief, Mr. Gerber. You got anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Kevin?
Oh.
Josh?
Good.
Carrie?
I just would like to invite everybody, I should put the, any council members out to the reach water plan. I've got a few things that are empty and it's a process to be able to grab. So, just to be called.
Okay. Ramon, fire.
Aye, Park General Report.
Okay. Public ladies, you have anything to bring up? Okay. All right, Jamie.
Um, we do still have the Keke Yama project. The fundraising is still going on for that. We have about eighteen days left, a little over two weeks, and we have just under twenty thousand dollars left to raise. So we still need donations for that, but thank you to all the donors. And then this Thursday is Main Street's third Thursday event and we have over twenty, that'll be open or have specials around downtown.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the media? Council, anything additional to bring up?
Yep, we're gonna have Back to School Bash August fifth. We had a meeting this morning about it. We're working on getting a musician, or magician, balloon guy. It's gonna be kind of a cool kid, kid fair, bounce houses and things. We're trying to get that organized. It'll be Saturday, August fifth from ten AM until one PM. To be, to be announced shortly.
Phyllis, anything additionally?
Um, our ordinance for the stormwater will be on the final reading on August first. The public hearing was, was omitted in the newspaper, so we had to change it. So we'll have final reading on August first. And then hopefully not, if not August first, August eighteenth, I'll try to get your budgets to you for the twenty-four budgets. We'll review all those.
Anne, anything additional?
No.
All right, we have claims.
Motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion to, Jeremy?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.